We will go ahead and call this meeting to order. Dr. Mills, would you help us forward?
Yes, sir. Mr. Davis?
Here.
Dr. Dyson?
Yeah.
Mr. Worthy?
Here.
Mr. Bybee?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Here.
Dr. Gann?
Here.
Dr. Knox?
Here.
Dr. Maddox?
Here.
Thank you. Would you please stand and join us in the start of our meeting and then put your hands up. Thank you. Michael, thank you. I would like to introduce you to the five of you on this stage in here. To your own or which is theirs. On this other side, we do this. Thank you. And thank you to the caller, Dr. Worthy. We'll begin our meeting tonight with a recommendation of achievements on board.
Good evening, Mr. President, Superintendent, and members of our Board of Education. I have the privilege of honoring one outstanding individual from the Clark County School District this evening, and our honorary is our January 2019 Better Everyday Award winner. At the October 11th, 2018 Board Meeting, we decide to make and introduce the Better Everyday Award. The award is given monthly to one district appointee who embodies our mission of ensuring academic excellence through implementation of rigorous standards in a safe and supportive environment for every child. This month's winner is Erin Seymour, Family and Consumer Science Teacher at Gilson Elementary School. Ms. Seymour was nominated for her positive influence on students and her outside out-of-classroom endeavors to keep students engaged. She spends her Saturday mornings at her students' extracurricular activities such as football games. She mingles with them, talks about their opinions on upcoming class plans. And Ms. Allington, who nominated Erin, says she has been able to keep my son engaged in class, and this is not a means or task. And gives his father and I positive updates regularly through emails. Her students love her. She makes their outlook on school much brighter and encourages them to do their best. Her attitude and persistence have really made a huge difference the past two years, and I feel she should be recognized for going above and beyond typical teacher duties. Congratulations, Ms. Seymour.
Congratulations again on that award. Thank you for all that you do. The next item is to amend or adopt our agenda. And I didn't see anything different. Is there a motion to amend or adopt the agenda?
Okay, I was, uh, there were two things. One is, is that if we want to talk about the MLK.
Okay.
Right, and the other thing is, and I don't know if we can do anything about this, but when the agenda is updated, we're getting a email telling us it's been updated, but I don't know how it's been updated. And so I'm going back to previous agenda, trying to figure out what's updated last time.
You guys can continue.
Sure. Here's the button.
When you get that email, if you follow the link that's in the email, it will take you directly to the agenda item that's been changed.
Oh, okay. I did not know that. Thank you. And the other, just from full circle, so the other item that Mr. Davis was talking about was is the board participation. He's been invited to participate in the MLK Day Parade, and he and I talked, and perhaps this is something we can discuss by email and put out there for anyone who wants to participate in that event, is having him participate in the Raise the Lights Parade. So I don't think we need any action tonight, if that's okay. Any other, any amendments to the agenda? Or a motion to approve the agenda? I don't have any appropriate agenda. Mr. Worthy?
I have a second.
My, uh, Mattix, thank you very much. All in favor? Thank you. The next item on our agenda is public comments. Do you see a list of any public comments? I believe we have any, is that correct?
It's not, we need more. That's where it's too.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Our first speaker tonight, maybe we need a section. Speakers will be limited to three timed minutes. At this point, remarks must be concluded. No speaker shall indulge in personal attacks while speaking. All comments are to be addressed directly to the Board of Education. To protect the privacy of students, speakers shall refrain from identifying specific students by name. Personal concerns may be addressed in writing with superintendent or to the president of the Board of Education. We have our time clock. If someone is, is in trouble, the time. Our first speaker will be Dr. Frankie Hill.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Frankie Hill, Executive Director for Programs and Administrator for Feed My Sheep, LTD. Feed My Sheep is a charitable 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization founded in 2012 by CEO Isaiah Ellis. This organization was organized in response to feeding and nourishing Athens area with a particular focus on the East Athens community located in the Triennial Plaza, Census Track 302. First, I want to congratulate our three new Board of Education members and being appointed as the representatives for your districts, and thank you for your commitment. Secondly, I'm here to advocate for the students and families that reside in Census Track 302. Our students attend our zone schools, Gaines, Gilson, and Seashells High School. As a result, they have been attending schools within the Census Track community that have been laid by the Governor's Office as failing schools and not doing reading for several years. As a result, the academic growth of these children in comparison to other children attending the secondary schools in the state has been stifled, thereby creating greater academic disparities between these groups of children. The College and Career Area Performance Index promulgates that our zone schools are in the bottom 5% of the state. A perpetual cycle has been created within the school system, where our students are being moved to the Clark County School District regardless of whether or not the academic foundational knowledge has been mastered. These students lack basic vocabulary, knowledge, and comprehensive reading skills to make analogies to terminations, which is a major component of standardized tests that are mandated later. For example, a rudimentary comparison of lorraine to a pie could not be analogized to icing on a cake by many of our elementary students because they don't know that lorraine is a topping. Many of these students end school with a vocabulary of less than 2,500 words than their peers. The research clearly points out that the children learn more between the ages of 2 to 6 than at any other time in their lives. I am here for you tonight to encourage this Board of Education to give serious consideration to supporting Superintendent DeMond's facility plan with a majority yes approval. This plan encompasses two impacted components: additional classroom and a partnership with Emory that will help us monitor our students' mental health. These proposed classrooms will create space for enrollment for quality certificated students to develop and increase the foundational learning for impoverished students. Feed My Sheep has a garden. We plant harvests and give free our products in Census Track 302. I'm suggesting tonight that a garden can be at any location, and if the present entrepreneurs want to market their goods, they can always come to the new site that would be available on sale. Dr. Mees has been relentless and appraising us, going to the schools of functional and crisis state. The Governor's Office D.C. report validates his assessment. We are a D system, and that has to change. The policy shows that your job as Board Leader is to support the Superintendent's responsibility to manage the day-to-day operation of the district's district schools. It is listed to in Code Ethics and Domain 3. Finally, our students know when they're being debatted. We are their stakeholders when they are being debatted. We need you as representatives of these students to make an investment and establish your resources to increase their foundational learning.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Worthy.
I would like to give a compliment.
Our next speaker, Cindy Williams, Billings List.
Did you copy?
This seemed like a good idea at the time. It may turn out to be like the scene in Jerry Maguire where he eats a bad pizza and writes a manifesto. It didn't, you know, didn't quite sound the same when everybody heard it, read it out loud. I'm kind of wrong a little bit. I'm coming here more as a mom, person who's kind of bereaved. I have two girls at Clark Central, one in middle school. I want to tell you something that happened yesterday is by no means, it's not out of the ordinary. I got trapped in the student parking lot right when the bell went out, and I'm in that sea of cars trying to get out. There's a carload of young women in front of me, a carload of young men in front of them, and some of them are hanging out the car, and they're yelling and laughing and talking. They turned to the girls and they say, "Follow us, we'll smoke." As if that invitation weren't bad enough, the next one, and I'm so sorry for this, but what the young men said to the girls, "We can go," starts with an F, ends with a K. Said it many times, very loud. Some parents walking by, young kids, no sense of shame about it, no sense of embarrassment. Surely there weren't any indignation on the part of the girls. You know, I was all ready for them to be insulted. They were not. There is a coarsening of culture at my school. It kills. I'm not even a very nice person. I'm kind of an impatient jerk most of the time. But I feel like there's got to be a way that these folks, these leaders here, we can figure out how to give kids tools they need to live a dignified life. You know, but they belong to me. This is my school. And I know virtue is kind of passe, it's old, it's tradition, it's, you know, we teach recycling and stuff now. We don't need to exclude that, y'all, because what I see, and I'm in it, I volunteer, my husband does, we all coach, we do things, and what I see happening, it's just not pretty. And yeah, you know, my kids and other kids, or, you know, they're coached enough by their parents to kind of come over here. I did hear one young man tell his grandmother when they heard it, "You just have to ignore it." What? What do we? We better not ignore it because it's a big part of what it means to be human, is to be dignified and carry yourself with your heart and respect other people. And respect yourself. And I don't know how y'all are dressed this, but I'm begging you, you do your planning and your appropriations and your, you know, you set the agenda, please don't forget this part, because those kids, they need it. They need it. It's pervasive, and it's dark. It is there, and we better look at it, or it's still by us all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to section E of our agenda, information items. First item is a board update, and it is, it is with a heavy heart that I met with the public, that this week we received a letter of presentation from Mr. Vernon Payne, who has been on the Clark County School District Board of Education for a very, very long time. More than 40 years longer than I've ever had. He's been sitting on the board and has been a tremendous asset to our community, and you know much better than I do just how much he has given in years and in expertise in his service. He has been an advocate for public education at a statewide level and served the Georgia School Board Association for a number of years. And I would like to take a minute to read his words from in the letter that he sent to us, just to give dignity to his sentiments. It says, "It is with great sadness that I submit my resignation from the Clark County Board of Education affecting the meeting today. I've come to the realization that it is in the best interest of our precious youth education that I step down to the public. While I may be stepping down, I shall continue to be concerned with the education of our youth, and therefore I will do whatever I can to continue the support of education. There is no greater pleasure than life that serves others. As a long-term member of the Board of Education, I have tried to give back to my community, standing alongside many other concerned citizens, trying and striving to make a difference in the young people's lives by ensuring that they are afforded an unsurpassed opportunity to receive the best possible education available to them. There are certainly too many exceptional and distinctive individuals that have traveled with me on my education, my improvement, and enhancement journey, to thank individually. So I will say thanks to everyone for unconditional support, dedication, due diligence, and efforts to make education for our youth an apparent issue as it is and shall always remain one of our fundamental, most important societal endeavors. The Bible states that every person is given these one talent in the course of God's plan for that individual. These God-given talents may never come to fruition without proper education. Students will be allowed to fall for cracks or permit to be placed in an atmosphere that is not conducive to learning and reaching their full potential. Could be the very students that may save the number of lives, change the world through innovation, develop the numerous, many computers and countless other life-saving, life-changing advancements. However, if we fail our youth, then we also have in turn failed ourselves as we have unknowingly cycled the many God-given talents that have been bestowed upon our youth. As active, as active citizens, profoundly always concerned about the future, our youth deserve and demand we afford each and every possible opportunity to reach their God-given potential. If anything less, then we should be ashamed of ourselves for settling for mediocrity, as it was simply too hard to do, was in the best interest of our youth. I've been blessed, I'm blessed with working with so many youth education dedicated individuals, and I'm sure that in my absence, the unyielding commitment to education of our youth shall continue. I shall always remember and cherish the friendships that I have with so many fellow educators and supporters, and I shall continue to pray for God's guidance and intervention on behalf of our youth's education. Very truly yours, Gordon Payne." And many of you noticed he's had to chair for it for some number of months, and as he has struggled with some health issues, his presence has been missed, his experience has been missed, his big part has been missed, and we will work with his family to arrange a fitting tribute to his service on the board. Related, we will, we have a board policy on how to fill this seat, and we would like the board to call a special meeting to discuss the process for fulfilling that vacancy. We have two board meetings, two committee meetings this upcoming week on three, on Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, I believe. And we'd like to look at the time immediately following the Tuesday and Thursday meetings to see if we can have a special board meeting to discuss what exactly the process will be to fulfill the seat vacated by Mr. Payne. If you would mind filling out your calendars to let us know whether a meeting at Tuesday at 6:00 p.m. after the policy committee? On Monday?
Government Relations.
Government Relations is Tuesday. So it will be after Government Relations meeting on Tuesday, so approximately 6:00 p.m. to begin that. Is there anyone that is not worked for?
That's your main date?
Yes. And then what about Thursday at 5:30? That would be after the Finance Committee meeting. Is there anyone that would not work for? Okay, so then let's do it. On Thursday at 5:30, a special call meeting this week to discuss the process by which we will fill the vacancy left by Mr. Payne.
So that's bound for Thursday?
Thursday, 5:30. Any questions about that? Thank you. Moving on to our agenda, we received a number of information items that were, are part of what happened and discussed at the board session. This is early Head Start Policy Council meeting minutes reports, as well as SPOLOSH Report, Athens Community Career Campaign Report, and Parents Advisory Report. Any of us any comments or questions around those? Then moving on to in our agenda, to item F, Board of Education Committee Reports. First here will be the Finance Committee.
Don't have anything. I think you just mentioned that you want to have a hall meeting on next Thursday at 5:30, and of course, the finance committee meeting is also next Thursday. Am I correct on that, the time?
It's 4:30 on Thursday.
4:30 on next Thursday, Finance Committee meeting.
Fantastic. And then moving on to the Government Relations Committee.
Thank you. On January 31st, this board will be having a town hall forum on our legislative agenda. And this is something that can be located on our website underneath the board tab. We have six items that we've identified as what will benefit children in Clark County. And we specifically drew up these six items because they all involve the legislature and the governor. And so we really invite you to, you know, look on our website and link this document, and please come and invite your neighbors and friends and family to come. This will, to our town hall on the 31st is going to be in the Oglodore Elementary School Cafeteria. It's going to be at 6:00, and it's going to go on until 7:30. This is going to be a floor directive. We're not asking the superintendent to come forward. This will be the folks who you've elected to be up here tonight. In speaking to board members, what we're, what I would like to do is, is we encourage, we have six different legislative items, and I know one board member said that, you know, she is unable to participate, but a couple of board members have said they will participate, and then the other board members will let them know which item of the legislative agenda that they would like to present to the public. That would be very beneficial. And what we're talking about is about a five-minute presentation by six board members on these topics, followed by a discussion from the community in terms of what the community thinks of our different aspects of our legislative agenda. We're talking about early childhood education that was spoken to earlier. We're talking about fully funding QBE. We're talking about providing both secondary education financing for students who are of low-income. We're talking about addressing the needs of teachers, both in terms of class size and in terms of pay scale for the state level, so that we can retain good qualified teachers in our classrooms. So those are some of our agenda items. And so again, you can find them on our website under the board, the tab for the legislative agenda. So I would like to invite any board members at this time to, if they've already kind of committed themselves to what they're willing to participate and be a part of this.
Greg, I'm talking with the big, it as well. Is there any other board members that might not be there? Does that change now? That's on the Thursday, 31st, that's 6:00 p.m.? Yeah. It's, yeah, so you may as well make it clear.
Yeah.
So I think that one, two, three, four, I think we have it for this way. And if we could post that just a minute, that's enough, that's enough for a meeting. So if we can make sure we get that posted, so that we don't have to file any more of obligations, that'd be fantastic.
And then I will say that the Government Relations Committee will meet at 4:30 on Tuesday, and we will flesh out these particular topics. And, but what we will also do is talk about, and we would, you know, people from the community who want to attend this meeting and help us do this, how, what to do after this presentation. In other words, what's important is not just laying out what the legislative agenda is, but how do we keep the public notified about what's happening in the state legislature that affects children? Although today someone said, I think there was a bill last year on ensuring that students have recess. Now, that's an issue that people in this community have been concerned about, but the contacting of our legislators on that was not strong. And I think that we don't, we don't always continue following these issues once they get to the floor of the legislature for a vote. And so, again, I encourage, you know, the word is out, and so we just want to broadcast our town hall meeting on the 31st of January at the Oglodore Elementary School Cafeteria. Thank you, sir.
Very grateful, Mr. Davis, and the committee has done a really good job of staying up to date and engaging with the legislative issues that affect education, not just the hot-button ones that come up in our explosive, but day-to-day, really pushing in an effective way. The next report from the Policy Committee.
Yes, on the incoming chair of the Policy Committee, we will be having a meeting on Monday, January 14th at 4:00 here in the Student Center. A lot of that will be oriented A lot of that will be great for you, Policy Committee members. We have three new Policy Committee members. And we have three policies, the whole business that will come out, Policy GBO, Professional Personnel Resolution, Policy DDFDC, Board Engagement with Community Organizations, and Policy HAA, Board Statement of Norms. And so that will be the main meat of that meeting. And so I encourage board members to attend, go around here on the committee, and still attend, and hope to see all the committee members there on the way forward.
Okay, thank you. And finally, the Property Committee.
I am the new chairperson for the Property Committee, but I haven't scheduled the meeting. But I know the superintendent that we need to is that the property will have all board meetings for property and industry of the union to be in for on the day of the place.
Thank you. And the, moving on to item G, Board Committee Committees. As many of you know, the school board, the school board serves on committees beyond our standing committees here. So these are committees out in the public, in the right of course. And at our last meeting, we excited on our committee assignments for the upcoming years. So these are very, very new. First committee is the County Community Foundation. And that is... Yes, that's like... Can you report? Very good. Other than that, you're excited about meeting the committees, yes. The next committee is the Community Oversight Committee, which I sit on as 12 of them. I'm Mr. SLOSH, we have a real estate meeting, is that something that you've attended? Mr. Davis did. As our honorary, honorary representative, that, from what we have, and that we just have a little bit cutting for our health policies interview, which we've worked on for quite some time, to rate reviews. Anything else from that, any other highlights from that?
There is, there's a few things. We, and I'm assuming this because of the brain, the completion of boarding school in VHS, we're a few weeks behind, but they should be finished in, I think this week. The destruction of both for VHS will be completed in the next two weeks. And then the Hillsman is, the Hillsman construction is proceeding, but again, this is, we will get back to it. So, but it's moving out, but those are my little D's.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, and thank you for helping for us. The next committee are Representative, the Vision Athens.
We had a quarterly meeting Tuesday, or it's about, my, my meeting today had, we meet at, we work, we work, we work, we work, we work, all the project managers. And those meetings are always, today's, second Thursday, second Thursday at 8:30. So it's, we're going to the public any point in the town. And at that meeting, it's the education oversight meeting. This, this, this week, this one, we had a discussion to just take a look at where we are, looking at issues from Vision Athens, looking at the court party, cutting out the public list. And we talked about moving forward, it's a good model for having community engagement across business district, private sector, public sector, non-profits. And we feel good about it so far, and we are also soliciting help in terms of how we met our objectives and purposes. I'm really excited that we actually have a lot of initiatives to complete, having that less major push-ups for parts, and the whole extension. Our first priority is, and then moving on to the next priorities, we really like the latest movement from our president, we have awesome oversight from Aaron Barnew, who's a budget manager, he's invited up to date on everything. And even Athens is your vision being utilized, and is part of that, and is that, work plans there, progress today is there, opportunities are there, it's all exciting. So I encourage you to take a look at that, and if somebody wants to have that, put that up, have a look.
Thank you. The next committee is the Foundation for Restless Public Education, which I am the new board representative. I have not attended any meetings yet, I have not been working, but it's a fantastic organization and I'm excited to, to support the board. And finally, the Georgia School Resource Association, Georgia School Resource Association, I don't see that, and Dr. G. I'm the representative, I still have to report, that's right. So then I have you over there. Moving on to item H, with its previous meetings, we received minutes from our regular meeting December 13th, 2018, to discuss our work session. And motion to approve those minutes. Mr. Davis, second. Second, Dr. Davis, thank you very much. Any questions or comments on those minutes? All in favor? Thank you. Moving on to item I, our policies, regulations, exhibits to be posted with the public comment for four weeks. Now, when we read through this list of items we have to be posted, this is Policy GABE harassment, Exhibit GABE1, employee harassment investigation checklist, Exhibit GABE2, employee harassment complaint form, Exhibit GABE3, employee harassment investigation report, Regulation GABR1, harassment review, to be reviewed, Policy GAF, staffs through relations, Policy GANA, road free workplace, Regulation GANA R1, road free workplace, Policy GBD, professional personnel hiring, Policy GBKA, professional personnel layout, Regulation GBKAR1, professional personnel layout, Policy GBT, professional publishing, Policy JAA, equal educational opportunities, Exhibit JAA E1, student harassment investigation checklist, Exhibit JAA E2, student harassment complaint form, Exhibit JAA E3, student harassment complaint investigation report, and finally Regulation JAA R1, equal educational opportunities. It's a long list. And all, again, all of these, you'll notice that some of them are to be revised, some are just to be reviewed, and all of these to be put out to the public for comment and review for the next four weeks. So we, if this passes to be published, and we welcome public comment on the A and B's. Is there a motion to put these out, second? Yes, question.
President, I know we've got to post these policies and almost all regulations for the weeks for review.
Thank you, Mr. Worthy, is her second. Mr. Davis, any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. We have low items on item J, policies toward outpouring sense, moving on to item K, Superintendent 's report, please, and we'll report this evening, sir.
We had a lot of questions that came up in our work session last week, and I wanted to say thank you, but I didn't get a chance to do that, to the superintendent and staff who gave us answers to us quickly and succinctly. I am just absolutely bored back in attention head at the right hand. I've just got so much paperwork, electronic copies and stuff, and I love the audio that's produced, so I really, really appreciate the thoroughness of the future investigations that I told us.
Thank you. The team, the team in back of me deserves all the credit there.
So to the team, thank you. How much you have about some chocolates, but I have eaten all of the chocolates. Every one of them, they were, they were awesome.
And if any members of the public are not familiar with board documentation heaven, it is, it is a fantastic place to be. Moving on then to item L, this is the consent agenda. We have a number of items that have been included in our consent agenda. I would just briefly read through these. This is approved of open net filters, approved annual Head Start, early Head Start program governance plan, approved the intentional file for pre-K annual grant, approved Head Start, early Head Start intent to submit 2018-19 grant amendment, approved fuel contract to Boswell Oil Company, approved 2019 work session and regular board meeting dates. Those are all part of our consent agenda. Is there a motion on that in consent agenda? Mr. Worthy, thank you very much.
President, I know we've got to prove the same agenda.
Thank you. Mr. Davis? Mr. Maddox, thank you very much. All in favor? Thank you very much, Mr. Maddox. Moving on to item N, other agenda items. The first item is to approve the resolution on legal services. This was discussed in our board session. Is there a motion?
That we do approve the resolution to pursue a change by just letting it allow us to go to a three-year contract with a four-year services.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Worthy, thank you very much. Discussion, we discussed a fair bit at the work session and received somewhat updated information. So we have board members, time to ask any additional questions, or Dr. Mills, if you want to provide any additional information? Okay, any questions?
Yeah, I have some questions. Based on the feedback that we got, I think this afternoon about the different districts and their different practices, I only saw one, Barrow County, that had a three-year contract. Others were either annual or no contract, I believe. So I guess I'm struggling here with why, what is the rationale for the three-year contract to be different from most of the districts that are in our area?
And again, to be clear, this is, this would not change our policy on contract per se, this would give us the flexibility to adopt a different timeframe than we currently have. This, the way I read this, this is asking for the flexibility. The decision is still ours whether we put out the RFPs for one year, for a year and a half, or 19 months, whatever we like to do. What this is, what this is asking to do is give us the flexibility as opposed to having the ceiling imposed as it currently, as it currently stands. That's my interpretation of that. Yes, Dr. Evans?
When I reviewed the action steps, to me, it's saying that we're going to keep moving with what, moving past the resolution, we continue to move with the three-year. That's what I'm, I'm understanding is basically what I'm reading. My, I don't see flexibility in that, in what I, what I read.
Let's open that up.
If I understand this correctly, it's not something that we can choose as a board to vote to change, that we have to go back to the state legislature to get permission to make this a three-year agreement? And that's what this was about, can't we go to the state legislature to get three-year, to ask for a three-year agreement?
To revisit what we discussed last week.
Yes.
The recommendation is for the board to consider passing a resolution to go before the Georgia State Legislature to just receive the permission to even consider having a multi-year contract with a legal firm. If the Georgia Legislature says yes, they're willing to approve it, then this board has to then decide if that's a step you want to actually do or not. I think Dr. Knox's observation of our survey of area districts is very clear. There's only one district, which is Barrow, that has a multi-year contract for legal services. So you may decide this evening not to proceed with this, and, and that's what you saw in the documentation, there's two different options you have. You could reject this this evening, and then we will just continue to submit our annual bids. You also, you also requested and you have received the number of responses that come to this district on an annual basis, based on the RFP, on an annual cycle. And you also received, Mr. Davis asked a question regarding, what are districts doing in terms of the number of firms they employ? As we discussed last week, we believe that this would, would make legal services more efficient. But we also, I think you had healthy conversation on the pros and cons of this resolution. You may decide not to go forward with it, which is healthy.
Not also, Brad, and the feedback that Mr. provided to us, there are districts that do not have time limits on their contracts at all. So not only do you have only one other that had a three-year timing, and you had about three or four that are not standing, that don't even have a time limit. And so the other thing that was interesting to me, because it's a big history book, is that, you know, we've kind of been with the same firm for however many years since 1955. And so we had a lot of relationships over those years that we even kind of cherish and depend on and rely on. So I think that there's a bigger question, as you're indicating, Dr. Knox, do we need to make a change at all? And what should that change be? So that would take us to another step and say, well, what drives this decision? What is the work that we are engaging our council with that would dictate whether we should go to a multi-year contract, no contract, or stay where we are? And I think that's the conversation the board would need to have, I think, to give the district a permission, a permission that would be our legal council permission to pursue as we legislators, to give us some flexibility and, and limitation of that decision as a timely to do. I think that we already, it's like to have to go through this RFP process, it's not a year, it's not, it's a nine-month cycle, we're constantly, the RFPs are the things that we must do to meet legal requirements to exist as a district. And so some of that should probably be pretty routine, but I think we have a good history to that day. So for that reason, I'm still in favor of us asking for that, we've been under this every year, based, there is the pattern, that we've seen.
I'm wondering as to how the next steps in the Board of Education for this proposed resolution, that the RFP that goes out would then be reflected in that, is that correct?
I think from a process standpoint, yes, we would want to leverage the role and the flexibility of a multi-year contract versus the annual, because if you remember, Dr. Kent, there was a question around how many responses have we received for the annual response? And as Ms. Davis has indicated, typically, when you have the annual responses, you kind of let yourself in on certain firms who are going to bid on annual services, because they know, as you said, that runway of every nine months or so is fairly tight. I think in terms of the actual quantity of years is something that the board, if you remember what we just discussed at the board session, I suggested that there would be some type of conversation between the board and administration to not only restructure that RFP, so if there are certain components of legal services you want, we can include in the RFP, but also we can determine for sure how long you want it to be. There was discussion how long it should be, it should be three years, five years. And so I think the Barrow, the Barrow model of three years is, and we discussed that over the last one as well, three years soon to be appropriate. Oh, yes, that's a long answer to, the next step is for the RFP to go, but that, you remember we discussed restructuring of that RFP to be whatever.
Yes, Dr. Max?
Thank you for clarifying, this is after, I mean, the three years, I didn't mistake that, but yes, that's our bad, that I understood it to be that would be actually locked in to the three years that, so thank you, Dr. Knox.
So there's clarity that, although, that it is not locked in for state, but I know she, the RFP discussion would determine what we're putting out there. the RFP discussion would determine what we're putting out there. And I would, you know, in the, I agree with you, Dr. Knox, it's sort of as helpful to see what else is out there. And I also, several people are not getting a contract at all, and so, there's, it's a useful gathering of data. It's also, you know, I don't take too much heart into it, because it was, it was a trend to do, and I was reminded, Mr. Crew, and I won't miss a meeting last, last week, in how much on three hours did you actually talk? But your colleague at the meeting made a comment about, about the legal obligation and your duty as an attorney as it relates to contracts for legal services. Is that something you could, that might be something you could review?
Yes, sir. And I just wanted to generally clarify that. And so, you are locked in now, and you cannot be locked in. You can't, what you passed in Iowa, you can't move in the future. State law rules, as well as case law, the state, the client must be free for a legal representation at any time of your wishes. So, that's one. You will follow the vast majority of schools, which to us, other legal agencies do not have contracts where they're current, unless the attorney is hired, if this is an aggregate issue, until a majority of the people decide to turn that representation. RFPs typically go out when there's a need for a new attorney, because the provider has died, retired, moved. You're not obligated to provide services any further, or the board has, there's been some reason that the board's not satisfied with the services. What you're passing to not even remove a small revision of your charter that requires annual bidding for legal services, that's all. Representation, once that's done, representation will continue again, unless until a majority of the board determines to terminate their representation and seek other counsel. I can tell you, I don't think anybody has served well in this annual bidding process. It obviously puts your current law firm sort of in a constant running for reelection mode, whereas if, if there is actual some, some reason to discuss different representation, if that's your life is organic, so that there are discussions between council and the board, so, you know, we determine, you solve the problem, or is it time for our ways? It does not serve the board well for a couple of reasons. One, typically, you bid out things that are project specific. Some types of legal services are project specific, rare litigation, if you hire a lawyer for a particular case. Now, typically, you don't have to do that, because council's provided for you, risk management, funding, A C C D, art page, contractors, those sorts of things are quite specific. The general counsel services, everything's moving all the time. So, even if there were a point at which you're wanting to switch counsel, it probably would not conveniently be at December 31st, because there would be better times when there are less balls up in the air than others. And the main reason I think it doesn't serve the client well is that I can tell you, when you have big law firms looking at RFPs, or publish some papers and whatnot, and the first question is always, is this just something being retained? Are they really looking for a new lawyer? We don't bid if it's retained, we just don't bother with it. But if it's something that's being done for a specific reason, then sure, we'll put our hands in the act. So, I wanted to clarify that, and you can't unlock yourselves in, Dr. Knox.
Thank you. And I did notice that in terms of the bids we received, aside from, from our current law firm, there was no law firm that put in one bid. It was just sort of, you know, they tried once, and now it tells us about it. So, we, yes, I struggle seeing folks on this side. Mr. Davis, we'll, we'll show you the votes on how to get my attention, but I appreciate your patience. Yes, Dr. Can, thank you.
So, thank you for clarifying that. And some of the questions that I had, and might just be, because it's, so, is it in our charter right now that we have a one-year contract? And so, we have to have a contract at all?
It's in our charter that we are required to put off to bid on an annual basis in the services.
Okay. So, and then, and your colleague had mentioned last week as well, that it, a lot of this has to do with the idea of having to every year do the, the RFP, and I agree that that doesn't make a ton of sense, nor is it a great use of, of your time. And I guess I wondered, and then this probably has to do with the contract, is, is there a way of not extending the contract, but also not making you do an RFP every year? Or is that what we're asking for? Are we asking part of the rule of having them have to do the RFP every year?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Anybody else for left, right side of my case? Okay. Goodbye, Knox, yes.
Just for clarification, we talked last week about how this was a little broader in terms of professional services. And so, this change would also open the door to multi-year contract for other kinds of professional services. So, that was my understanding.
Could I bring that, I think it's all, yes, that's, that's correct. It does apply to all professional services.
Do you have a question about professional services that we have? We talked about that.
We talked. There was some discussion. One thing I would like to ask, maybe point out about the previous RFPs is, it is my recollection, I'm still fairly new on the board, that some of those RFPs went out relatively late. And so, I don't know, we didn't ask specifically for information on when the RFPs went out, so I don't know if that information is available, but going back to 2014 or so, that is what I understood. So, I'm, I'm not sure if the number of proposals received is reflective of what could have happened in other circumstances, but that's, that's really more second-hand information.
We have a, a motion and a second to, to approve this resolution. We're in the middle of a conversation, and heading towards, heading towards the vote?
Yeah, I just heard something I wasn't aware of. So, what we're, I focus on legal services on this petition for the legislature. Are we talking about more than that? Administration is now making a recommendation to extend professional services beyond what's in front of me right now, which is legal. I think the retainer model for architectural services, Mr. Go, would be, it has the potential to be multi-year as well? Or is, is those two professional services, everything else, if, if we had been on a cycle of annually putting up for bidding, we're, we're suggesting that we should continue that cycle? Do we have other, because I don't think I have a clear grasp, but do we have other professional services out there that I'm, that I'm just clueless to? So, so, I guess that's, that's an empty filter in this school? Right, although that's not really a licensed, that's not a professional service. Right. This is strictly talking about requiring this provision, you're trying to require locking in the annual RFPs for professional services that are licensed by the state of Georgia, which, some questions, whether that even goes to that or not, but that's, it's just releasing yourself and having, you still do it every year, you want to do it every six months. Again, if it relates to lawyers, if we have a contract, it's strictly one way. You can lock me in, my firm, to a weight structure for a certain period of time in my contract, but we can't lock you in wholly unless that's your counsel from the end of that term. Yeah, I guess I'm just concerned about what is not stated at this time.
So, that was part of our conversation last week, and we've made it through talking about, that's when, when Dr. Can actually brought teachers and their contracts, and so that was a part of the information packet that we had today this afternoon, in terms of the research about us staff. We talked about the security, and that was one of those professional services contracts as well. So, we, we fleshed it out pretty well, actually, that there's more to say about it, I guess, and I understand what the unwavering is.
And it sounds like from, from Dr. Means, that is, it's your argument in, if we, not only if we pass this, this resolution, but also if we get the permission that we're requesting, that takes another professional services, right, coming through, that your RFPs are going to reflect a one-year term and not some open-ended term for it. And again, these are, all of these are above the $8,000, we're always going to see these, we're always going to come across in our agenda, because they need that threshold limit. Now, Dr. Can, something that I just wanted to add. Are you okay?
Yeah, let me get it again. I think that's all.
Okay.
I wanted to jump in.
Yes, Dr. Mattis.
You know, we talked a lot last week, but I'm still, we talked about going into that, the architectural contract, if we do this legally, that's related to the same thing for that, the architectural firms, that's not what I, and I'm saying, that's not, that's not what we just said, that's just.
So, if you already have multi-year contracts for construction, for whatever reason, it's different. So, that, yeah.
Can we get the opportunity to have that, have that full-fledged conversation?
I'm still, I'm looking at the stuff that we're, I didn't have a chance, I reviewed this, and that's what I was telling you, I reviewed stuff, projects, so, I may not be up on, but it, maybe you're saying there is a list of, of the professional services that we give, that is in the email today?
Just the answers to the question that we gave there last week, in terms of responding to people's readiness to do this, to move this to consent, we took out a consent so that we could have this conversation. I'm just remembering from that discussion, that the question came up about teachers, because they are professionally licensed by the state of Georgia, and can they have more than a multi-year contract? And the answer is no, theirs has to be done annually, so they are not covered under this waiver, if we get this way, or if we get this changed to our charter. We talked about the SRO, I think that was one of the other contracts that we talked about, and that led to, that's what the special award contract looked like, because we have that entire contract and package that the staff provided to us, maybe this afternoon, so it's seven pages long.
So, the SRO would be part of the three-year?
They're not.
Okay, well, that's what I'm, I'm.
But my point is, those are the contracts that we brought up.
I know, I know that, but I thought you were, you said earlier.
These are, this is where those, those actually lie. So, nothing new has been identified, as far as I can see.
I want to say I'm applying something to you. There's only one person in this school that's issued with a three-year contract, and that's me, Dr. Means.
That's right.
And that's the law. Okay, go beyond three years.
But the boys in the district, of course.
That's right. But if both of you so chose, as the discussions were, then we also all in our legal council to that.
No, because they're not the boys in the district.
No, but in terms of people. Well, I think there's a couple of other options. I think, I think there's other options. I think the other option would potentially be if you pass the resolution, and this board then talk about how you want to receive legal services, you could, as you saw in the survey, you could, you would structure it where there is no contract, and you, taking counsel until you decide not to, and I think that's what Mr. Crew was trying to identify, that there's, there's another model. Administration proposed a, a multi-year contract structure, because you're used to having a contract. But there are social districts that don't have any contract. Candidly, my experience is that there isn't a contract with the council, and it's to a point where it, it doesn't work. It typically happens when there's a retirement of a veteran attorney who serves the board, and when that person fidgets away, then the board has to make a decision, are we going to vote to the next person on their bench in the term, or do we put the services out for bid to see what's out there? And I think that's, if you remember from our conversation last week, it was my recommendation that it appears that this board needs to discuss legal services and ignore the whole perspective, with Mr. Davis asked a question, and we tried to gather data as much as possible, sir. So, do districts have multiple firms that serve multiple services in terms of legal services, or the, for the board education, specifically? And so, administration is, I think it's going to be very open to having those discussions with the board. It's going to be, like, the first step in the process is for you to keep in, see if you can even have the flexibility. Right now, you don't have the flexibility of deciding if you don't have, you don't have any contract, or you don't have a multi-year contract, because your charter states that you have to put this service out for bid on an annual basis.
And, thank you, thanks for that explanation. And to me, to, and to folks, I think this is relatively small, it was asking for more flexibility for, 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 for doing that, this is not just a complete good conversation we've had, but in terms of the, the items tasked, that were tasked with this, on a global level of things that, things that we do, so I want to give it a good look for sure, and to integrate, you know, the, the honors or not.
I think, I just have a quick, my concern is, I like the flexibility that the resolution, it seems like, would give us to, you know, be able to do multi-year contracts. I do like that. I think with it being put together, however, it, as a new board member, it's a huge learning curve, it's an understatement. And so, with having the flexibility, but then also, it looks like if we hold in that way, that, that is also to assume that an RFP will be released in about two months for a multi-year contract? And I know we have the history, I think that is really helpful, as far as the history with, you know, the law firm and legal services, but I don't think, me personally, I would be, could yet to make a decision as it relates to what you mentioned earlier, Dr. Means, as far as even the role, you know, so, perhaps, you know, what do we feel constituents need, what does our school district need? And so, it sort of seems like it would sort of push us there to, you know, to be like, to actually say, yeah, we want flexibility, but then in a couple of months, we're going to have, you know, maybe a multi-year contract? And I'm still trying to grasp, like, you know, what, what might be the, the better option as far as likely, how legal services are used, related to the options that you mentioned last week? So, that's sort of my only concern, but I do like the flexibility that it, that it provides. And I will say, the other concern, but I don't know that, I mean, that's sort of outside of our purview, of course, is teachers and employees. And I think, you know, we, we have people working with kids every day with our own year contracts that are, don't feel that their jobs are secure. And it does sound like one of the primary benefits of having a yearly contract, or the RFP, or the primary disadvantage is that it puts the attorney, or those services, in an uncomfortable position. And so, that's not going to be deep enough, but that's something in my head, like, there's some, you know, sort of context as far as why this is important.
Well, and, you know, from our journey, we could, we could decide one night, let it go, right? So, so there is, you know, it is a one-way binding thing. And perhaps what we can do is, is find time in our work session to carve out, where we can have an open conversation around how we engage the legal services. Because we have a couple of questions around contract, no contract, you know, how long the contract, you know, we talked last week also about, you know, multiple attorneys versus one attorney. We have a fair amount to discuss there, all of, all of which is a little bit separate than, than this issue. But I think if we can carve out time in a work session to have that fuller conversation around the legal services, and before, in our, the moment you're achieved, I think that would be a reasonable way to do it. We can reap that. Yes, Dr. Can?
And this is more of a question, just because I'm new also. But, so, on the agenda is a requested action, so it talks about what is requested of the board, and there are some things listed there, but some of those things seem different than some of the things we've been talking about, and you've been saying that there's some flexibility in how we might restructure it. So, my question was, if we are voting in favor of this, are we voting for the things that are listed here, or are we voting for the things that we're talking?
The only thing we're voting for this evening is to pass the resolution to then go to the.
to the legislature. That's it. The rest of the steps are steps that can be scheduled and discussed at a later date.
So for example, we would be voting to go to the legislature, but we wouldn't be voting for what we're asking the legislature specifically?
The resolution, the resolution is very clear that it is requesting flexibility from the provision in your charter, in the district's charter, of having to place out for bid on an annual basis professional services. That's what, that's what should be asked to consider in the pass of the resolutions.
Delete, delete subsection D, and then we letter E to D and change the references into subsection E, into the subsection A to C. So it's just delete section B and I think it all works.
D.
Delete subsection D. That's all. And that subsection is what requires professional services to bid annually.
And we would still have to vote on the RFP and approve the RFP, and vote on selection made by the board, but it is happening this time, right? So none of that stops. The only thing that stops here is for additional, having to have to do it.
So we have a motion on the floor to approve the resolution. Second, fantastic discussion. I think we have for our future work sessions to flesh out this conversation around how we use legal services before any future RFP goes out. If it's okay, I'd like to go ahead and call for a vote then on, on the motion on the floor. In favor? opposed? opposed? stated? Thank you. Sorry, with the four votes, in favor? opposed? stated? thank you. Moving on to, I have to, the school resource officer, annual agreement.
Mr. President, board members, they will request for additional information regarding training with SROs that was submitted to this.
Okay, there's an email that came around. I intend to report a lot of that type of information, and thank you again for the quiet matter. Is there a motion on the SRO annual agreement? please?
I said.
Would you agree to the annual agreement?
Yes.
One second. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any additional questions on the SRO annual agreement?
What I wanted to do is just kind of take this opportunity, I, by the time that I got this, this stuff in, in Dr. Meads' office, I had done some research myself, and I am impressed with the, with the training that SROs are getting. There, it is 80 hours of training from the, from the summer. And it includes gang awareness, drug awareness, crisis intervention, mental health, active shooter, and a lot of, you know, adolescent mental health. I originally pulled this from the agenda because of the, of the National Association of School Resource Officers also have training in East, Eastern, but anyway, in the summertime. But this is obviously, that, there is only 40 hours. But they do have one, this, this National Association of School Resource Officers does have a special mental health workshop, which is not convenient for us because it's, it's too far away, it's not in, in the state. But I, I'm, I'm, I just put out there that I think that the, that the importance of making sure that I will, you know, hopefully our resource officers are getting ongoing training, particularly in terms of how you work with adolescents. So I guess that would be my only question, if, if there is ongoing training, you know, I know we do that with teachers during the course of the year, and principals and that type of thing, if there's ongoing training that's done, not just in terms of, you have this training given.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Davis, board members, Dr. Myers and I discussed this issue earlier today. ACCPD is offering training on how to handle mental health issues in the community February 20th. There are a total of 30 seats available for our training. We will be sending five individuals to that training with the lens, with the specific lens of identifying, so how can we craft that training for our staff, including all of our CCSD police officers and SROs. And we're hoping to engage ACCPD to offer a special training for our staff either in March or April. We understand that not only the SROs or CCSD police officers, but in many cases, administrative assistants who are first readers in an office or bus drivers, food service workers, older individuals who are first in dealing with, in some kind of cases, mental health issues. So we understand that that's a training issue that we need to address, and it's the, we're trying to broaden the scope around how to provide that professional training for people.
With the descriptions of the courses for the school resource officers, I see listed restraint and seclusion. And this particular contract is for like police, or I'm not sure of the official term of like public service, but not for the school security departments, but the police officers. What are the, what is the restraint and seclusion like curriculum? I'm asking from the standpoint of, I know, like, we have, you know, officers in our middle schools and, and high schools, and, and sometimes things can get pretty, rather than it was for us fighting, but also figuring out how to prioritize safety, will students do have to be physically restrained? So what, what does that course, how often is that course, and what is the course?
For me, in this particular course, any of the, the seclusion training, they, they will, the security officers, the police officers, in aggressive fights, in aggressive situations, using the best way we can try to be as light as we can without physical restraint, that would be a good, a safe, probably, to do.
So, may I, I think another way of asking the question is, so what's the protocol in ACCPD SROs? And because I think that's, that's a distinction we should make, that the SROs are a distinction of ACCPD, and the district hires its own police officers. So what is the protocol, since you're still fairly familiar with ACCPD protocol? What is the protocol for ACCPD officers if they have to seclude or restrain one of our students on site? What, what techniques do they use? How hard do they like?
Yeah, because I would imagine it's probably quite different than people who are either unarmed or teachers, of course, that there's maybe a different type of thing or approach to use. And so, like, even, of course, even if you, like, don't know tonight, I was just hoping you could sort of point us in that direction, you know, at some point, so we could take a look, not that I respect the police department, the change of approach to restraining, you know, people, but I was just more curious about it.
Well, the first item would just be the presence. If you do the same, you know, great things, if you have experience with having school teachers and staff, behave with those things, they're really important parts about the SRO, just whatever. They've had a relationship with kids so often, they get, if just the presence could do that, and it doesn't, then we do it the safest way.
Do you think we'll follow up on this more? I, I understand exactly what your question is, the nature of the question is that if, and I use him as an example because we should all try to distinguish the difference here, what you're proving this evening is to hire officers from ACCPD to serve as school resource officers. But Clark County Schools also hires officers. And so one of those officers is someone that is beloved in the community, Terry Reed, right? So how does Terry Reed approach seclusion, restraint versus if an SRO or an ACCPD officer is called to a school site and they have to restrain and secede? Are there different protocols and procedures being used? I think that's your question.
Yeah, and I wouldn't expect it, of course, to be exactly the same, but I think the bigger context is like in the high schools, when there are, there's a combination of like SROs and unarmed security. I'm just sort of thinking, how can we at least position the student and that non-SRO officer, as well as the SRO officer, how can we at least prioritize sort of the, the safety and try to de-escalate that? And maybe this is, this is not relevant here because it's the SRO, but I can still think more along the lines of also those security officers who are not SROs. If, if these officers have seclusion and restraint training at some point, might it be a, a good idea, maybe to revisit at some point, co-located meeting, to look at what those unarmed officers do so that they can work sort of smoothly together, you know, to prioritize safety when a fight breaks out, or, you know, or something like that?
So that's a different layer to your question, right? So I think we can come back to and share with you and write in the way we did this morning in terms of what is the training process for seclusion and restraint for all of our employees. So just last week, we trained many of our principals, because candidly, on, on the staff side, our, our building principals are the first ones to have to seclude and restrain. I, I, what I'm interested in your question is that boards across, boards of education across the country have had a deeper conversation around, so what are we going to allow in regards to seclusion and restraint when police hit our campus in terms of how they're going to deal with our kids, right? So for example, there are some school boards who will say, you can't use your traditional handcuffs on our kids. So even if they challenge out of control, even if you have to restrain them and eventually arrest them, there, there should be some type of process that we at Board of Education get to weigh in. I thought that was the direction you may, may be going, and I think that is, that is a conversation that boards of education nationally have had in the past. And so if that's the direction you're going, I think that is, that's clearly an obsession topic for the future.
And this is a, this is a fantastic thing with this question, it's a fantastic example of, of how we have agenda items come up, and they come up for a particular reason, but they can spark all sorts of debate and conversation for a variety of reasons, right? So this particular item is coming up because it is a $18,000 threshold, so we need to, we need to approve, but it can spark great questions and conversations that, that we can give the superintendent an opportunity to fully flesh out. So if we want to have a conversation around restraint particularly, or, or school safety in general, we can, we can decide that as board and, and task our superintendent and staff with, with helping us understand the current status of, of those things, and then have a fuller, more in-depth conversation that is permitted with, you know, the, the time constraints of discussion, discussing a contract. Well, thank you for that. We have a motion, a second to approve the contract. All in favor? opposed? Thank you.
We want to thank our colleagues at ACCPD for this ongoing relationship. Absolutely. Now, Mr. Davis, the Government Relations Committee is asking us, what type of ongoing partnerships and relationships do we have with county government? This is one of the shiny examples of a good relationship.
Yes, thank you. The next item is under section N, is item three, approve Lindsey Paul Brayfield and Clifford as architectural firm on retainer. Dr. Meads, I know you provided some additional information, any additional information or...
Mr. Clifford and I hope that some of the flowchart items and other information provided will help the board in your deliberation. But ultimately, we're seeking to place architectural services on retainer versus on a project-by-project basis. And we identified that on small, on small projects, we gave a list to the board of small projects that are slated for this spring and summer, that if you put out to bid architectural services on a project-by-project basis, it could delay it, delay the project one, one to three months in some cases.
Thank you.
To have that list of the more immediate needs out there, and I did read in the RFP that there is a line for any engagement, and it is not defined narrowly, so I'm pretty much intent on whether we have space to have the conversation.
Is there being a recommendation to approve Lindsey Paul Brayfield and Clifford as an architectural firm on retainer? Is there a motion? It's important.
Yes, I agree with that, we have to approve this item, Lindsey Paul Brayfield, Clifford as an architectural firm on retainer.
Thank you, Mr. Worthing. Is there a second?
One second.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Thank you, Ms. Davis. Any additional questions? Questions? Yes.
So we talked about this a lot last week, and this motion is to approve this specific firm for this, or to have them on retainer, but I guess my question was, was this something that the board had input onto prior to posting the RFP, whether we wanted to have somebody on retainer at all? Because I think that was, that was the bigger question. I don't think the problem was that this specific firm, it looked like from all of the reviews, that this firm was, was above the others, that a lot of the questions had to do with whether we wanted to do this at all, have a one architectural firm on. I guess that, that was my question.
Thank you. Dr. Meads, any additional insight on to, to this question?
I don't, I, I don't understand the question.
Well, so, so we just spent a lot of time talking about whether we wanted to maybe change legal services on a multi-year contract, and that was in general and not specific to one legal firm, and I think we have a lot, obviously, we have a lot of conversation about that. And I wonder if there was a similar conversation asking about whether we wanted to have an architectural firm on retainer at an, at an earlier date before getting to the point of selecting one particular firm?
No, ours, our supply department brought forth a recommendation to my office stating that it would be most efficient for their operations to have a architectural firm on retainer. We then released the RFP, and then per policy, it's coming before you due to the dollar threshold. That's typically where the board then gets engaged and has the ability to either approve or reject the recommendation.
And that, and my other question was whether that was something that typically was asked ahead of time, so, I mean, I don't know.
So I think that's, that's, Dr. Davis, I think that's, that's probably the, that helped clarify, I think I, I think I understand your question a little bit more now. So typically, no, this wouldn't be something that, this, this is not the type of topic that would typically come before the board to ask, how you want to proceed. I think legal services is a little different because there's such an intersection between the board's work and legal services. It's rare that the board engages with architectural services. I think that's why Ms. Davis's questions around, so what, how can we, how can we make sure... sure that there's collaboration and partnership with the firm and our children is so important? That's probably the extent to where the board would engage and be involved in this process. Other than, yeah, other than approving or rejecting.
And I guess, my question really came from the fact that most of our discussion was about whether or not we wanted to have any firm on retainer at all. And now we already have people who have applied through the RFP, and so this is the point at which we need to approve them. But it seems like if, if we decided we didn't want to approve them, that, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, but this was based on the conversation, or how I thought the conversation was going, that it wouldn't necessarily mean that we didn't want these people, but it was that the board didn't like the idea of it in the first place. So, to me, it seems like it would be beneficial to make that decision before the RFP went out. And that might not be the way that it's typically been, but if I were the architectural firm and I answered an RFP for a particular project, and then I was the top one, but then it was like, "Yeah, but we don't want to do this anyway." I would feel like that was a waste of time and something that could have been decided before the RFP went out.
And typically, right, and so typically, we as a board would receive the contracts above $8,000, above yes or no. And then the, the management of contracts below $8,000 and the management of receiving contracts above the $8,000 threshold. So the whole management side of RFPs going out and being considered and all that as a next to. Yeah, they typically reside with the superintendent and his staff in the administration of executing all the business of the district. And so this typically is that, you know, from a board perspective, this is that, this is that place where we come in and vote yes or no based on kind of what they lay in front of us. And so we rely on them to make good smart decisions on what contracts they bring out, what RFPs they put out there. And we review superintendent and he reviews his staff on their, on how successful they are in executing those obligations.
I totally understand your question now. So thank you for allowing me to process. It's, it's unusual, and I think it's unusual for staff to bring to the board a concept of going to RFP before actually releasing the RFP. Typically, what happens is that staff does its job, releases an RFP, and if it meets the threshold per policy, then we bring the recommendation through that RFP selection process to the board. That's, that's the usual concept. And so, yes, you're right. It places the board in a situation where you're being requested to either accept, approve, or reject the recommendation promptly.
But sometimes, as you're right, it sometimes does create a little funny, funny interaction, perhaps, but it's a, it's a big, kind of, the thing we've got to do. Any other questions around, um, slide?
Based on our discussion last week, I don't, I just don't feel good about it. And that's me thinking about the community as a whole thing, about our children thing, about our parents, you know, and those sound a little less than it, but with firms, you know, definitely from other places, giving a top million-dollar, you know, contracts. And I guess that's what I always say, well, we need, we have parents not working, we have, you know, workers, you know, so that, we have people in the city who need work. And, you know, I feel like enough us to have a bigger discussion around, you know, contracting, maybe our, our, with our lines of community, but still I think that needs to be a better discussion about our contracts and what firms, what we are asking, what are our needs when it comes to community engagement and, you know, prime members, you know, I love that with some little rounds, but we have firms getting contracts for years, 30 years, 40 years. What, how does that definitely benefit the people in our community, our families, and our children?
Yeah, for the, for the, for the, for the, for the, briefly.
Okay, this is Speedos five, and I've been involved in Speedos ever since we started in the building of, uh, Seashore High School. Architectural firms, contractors, etc. I said some things last week. Now, looking at this particular firm, you know, have they been doing lousy work? I really needed to raise my hand, no. From what I have read, Mr. John Gertham up there, they have done quality work. No matter what work going down, they've done quality work. Number two, they have stayed within the budget, okay? You don't have one of these change orders. Change orders would cost additional money from Speedos. And I contend with over the years, we have had some lousy work done by architectural firms and contractors. I mentioned last week, where, I think it was at Park Central, and that same firm went to Atlanta with the Speedos of the school district, bricks, fall of the wall. Now, I continue by saying this, if you have someone doing quality work, want change. And take a chance on someone that never had done any work in this school district. And I mentioned last week, with Seashore High School, oh, change order after change order. And we don't believe that. If they stay within the budget and do quality work by change.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Please come in.
Yes, please. I spent some time today looking at this. First off, just a little bit of the history. You know, we used to have a construction class in Clark County that was eliminated in 2011. I found out today, there are, there are 35 certified construction programs in our high schools in the state of Georgia, and 14 metal programs. Let me finish. We have a construction program right now, and that's, and that's, that's out of our authority, okay? That's done by the superintendent and the staff in terms of what's, what's needed in terms of career development. But I do think, and the reason why I'm voting against this, is that, you know, we have an opportunity, and this building on, on, on what Dr. Maddox said, we have an opportunity to develop appreciative programs for our students in these construction sites. Now, one question that we've been raised is the fact that there are labor laws, working comp laws, that prohibit, prohibit, prevent, let alone the 18 being in a construction site. That is currently, the work-based learning program in the state of Georgia is currently attempting to change that. So that 16 and 17-year-olds could go onto a job site. So, I say that in the sense of, I'm voting against this not because I don't think this is a good firm, not because I don't think that they do quality work and that they're under their time. What I'm, what I'm seeking, and doesn't have to be within the contract that has already been awarded, it could be an indentment, which I would be very happy with. Or we can, we have to rebid it, we can rebid it, but I would like the option for this board to, we're going to distribute tens of millions of dollars to an architectural firm to do the kind of work that they've been doing in the past, to be a part. We want then to have some commitment to our youth. And I think it can be done legally. We have, we have raised this before. This is not the first time that the board has, has talked about this. And so, I don't believe that out there is an option. And so, that is one reason that I'm voting against is not because I disagree with the process, not because I disagree with the philosophy of a, of a three-year contract with this firm. The fact is, I'm looking for a piece that I think can be in there legally. Another aspect of that is that I'm, I'm also looking for a piece that talks about small and minority businesses as subcontractors. I went to the Georgia Department, I mean, the Georgia Procurement Manual, Department of the Goods and Water Services, State Procuring Division, and they talked about the fact, not only do they encourage small minority businesses to be subcontracting work with state projects, they actually have a tax supplement, a tax benefit for doing so. And I just feel like that these businesses, because we are, we're taking this firm and we are at least, we've got a number of major projects on the line for, for Splash City. And I would love this firm to be there doing the work and also benefiting our young people who are, who are looking to, to develop their skills in this area, as well as small and minority businesses who want a, a little bite of the apple in terms of to prove themselves on the job site. So that's why I'm voting against it this time. Well, and then, yes, just a couple of things. And I'll, I'll come back to this at the end of the meeting, but I just want to thank board members for explaining why they're voting a certain way. I think that is good for the public to hear. I think when there isn't an explanation for why people vote one way or another, that's, that's difficult for the public to figure out. So thank you for sharing your thoughts. And maybe you do have this understanding, but we're not discussing contracts, contracts for construction companies. This is a, a process to have an architectural firm on retainer. An architectural firm, and I'm going to refer to Mr. Gilbreth to, to help me explain this, but typically what happens is that an architectural firm is found with John and his team to draw out the, the potential model. And then that becomes the parameters for which a construction company then has to work within. But I've heard, I've heard this evening through your very explicit descriptions as to why you're voting a certain way, which is good. I've heard people mention construction. And, and so, I think, I just want to make sure that we all understand that we're not talking about construction companies, we're talking about an architectural firm. And we're good there. John and I, and I know that on a very broad basis, but typically what happens is that this plus department will, will say, "We need to..." Well, I think the cosmetology lab is a really good example. So, we had a very, we had a blank room, and we had to engage with an architectural firm to say, "So if you were going to construct us to become a cosmetology lab, how would you design it?" And then an architectural firm has to have some understanding of construction, but eventually says, "This is how we would design it. These are the parameters for a construction company to do its work." And then, from that point forward, then Mr. Gilbreth uses those plans to engage construction companies to actually do the constructing. So then, so what we're seeking is to have an ongoing relationship with an architectural firm, where, and I think we put it in the information, that could serve as a thought partner. If, if you see a certain room and you want to configure it a different way, you typically start with an architectural firm. I, I hear people discussing the concept of construction. The other component that I would just say thank you for the feedback on is, if the board, I've heard from at least one board member, if being a local firm for whatever service we're seeking, that is a priority for the board, we can continue to give that strong consideration when we, when we develop RFPs and put that language in, and then when we also evaluate RFP responses. Did I describe the, the process of working with an architectural firm accurately?
Yes.
Okay. This is, you've been so, so patient over here.
Thank you. So I appreciate the interesting site, insights that I'm hearing from our board members. And this, this is an ongoing discussion, and I think that there are probably two parts to this, obviously. I understand that there's a separation, and we really are certainly voting to engage in a, pretty much a consultative agreement with this architectural firm to be what you've stated in our minutes here. That's fine. My request last week, and still is my request, and was again, how do we, we don't have to answer this today, but it is something that I would want us to look at without violating any laws or trying to make it difficult for people to do business with us, but how do we get companies who are awarded contracts, who do not live in this community and are not, are not given to give back to this community? So under that broad statement around community engagement that's in the, in the RFP, I would like for us to find out, how do we work that statement so that we can actually get some benefits, not only to, they may pay for the work they're doing, but have some skin in the game in terms of the outcome and the impact on our community. It can be, it's a, it's been a number of things, but I would like for us to pursue that as one of our policies if we will, in terms of engaging firms to do business with us. And it is, it becomes a, a ball that we pass over to the policy committee, and it's not something that we can solve with this. We don't want to hold up, you're doing the work that needs to be done in order to get these projects done, because we don't want to get behind on that, because of major construction coming up. So, for that reason, I'm willing to support this, but I do not want us to lose sight of the fact that if we are a firm that has a history with us and with large institutions in this community, they are always going to be the best because they have more practice at doing it. And so then, in terms of that community engagement, is there space in that line item to have them, them engage local people in the work that they are being contracted to do? That's a request that I have.
And I think you made, you know, a great point that, and I think, Dr. Maddox and Mr. Davis, I think you're going to find a lot of commonality with other board members in the concerns and the questions that you've raised. I think the question becomes how, what's the, what's the most efficient way for us to engage with, with those topics? And Ms. Davis mentioned policy. So if we want to engage with something and quantify it as a priority for the board, we have, you know, of the, our ability to enact policy is where, that's where the rubric arose for, for the board. And so we, I think we find a lot of, a lot of commonality with, with some of the sentiments that have been expressed. And the challenge for us will be, is the, what's the best way to engage with making those things happen? Is it putting a particular contract down, or is it through a policy process? Is it through one of the other levels that we have as, as we have board members? Yes, again?
My question would be, well, statement and question, I guess, as it relates to policy, ideally, as we were in creating RFPs, this would be a part of the conversation. And I'm sort of, just to give some context, as far as where I am, I'm really on the fence because I, I do understand that this area is outside of my expertise. So I honestly have no idea what is, you know, if something is built, you know, great, it's not, you know, anything go out that I can see, but it's almost, you know, outside of my expertise. And I think there is a degree to which, you know, we have to trust our colleagues to do the work that they, that, that they do. There is this other piece, however, with, I think, part of it is policy, Jared, and then the other part is where we spend our money. And to me, those two sort of go hand in hand, and I think it is a little bit more comfortable to say, "Okay, well, in the future, we'll have conversations on our RFPs and figure out the language." But in the future, you know, there is this risk that the future can be the future, not a main concern. So from all the fence, what we may concern is then how, as we move forward, how do we ensure that we're not letting people out, all of the people that, you mentioned earlier... not locking people out? Um, all of the people that, um, you know, you mentioned earlier by, uh, correct, Mr. Davis and Dr. Maddox, how do we be sure that we're not blocking businesses, um, out while we're, you know, pooling money outside of our community? And so, it's, I know these are separate projects, but they are in the same context. Like, we talked about two things tonight where we are of a rate home, our sons of money, um, and we have families who are not making a living wage. And so, that is my, my tension. I want to, of course, I, you know, trust my colleagues, and then the other part is the winter's the best time to do it. Um, so that's sort of where I am.
And how do you add, you know, maybe, uh, add on to what you're saying? How do we have those bigger conversations? And remind us that how do we, um, how do we give the folks we hired to, to own the school district, how do we, you know, not stand in their way to run the school district while at the same time, uh, not forgetting the board that they want to have these larger conversations? Because you're right, I think if these are conversations that have been exploring in lack of years in the board, and I know it has been part of the conversation for that. So, you know, how do we, you know, let the, the administration of the district continue to handle it? We have those bigger conversations that are, are, and those are our conversations to have, absolutely. Those are our conversations to make sure, um, what we have, what we derive at, at consensus are reflected into the work that the district does. Uh, the idea is that sort of push and pull of, of, uh, making sure we have those conversations while at the same time, uh, the operation of the school district continue to happen in any time.
Uh, yes, Greg, we're coming, then we can move on.
Okay. Again, and I do appreciate Dr. Mads' explanation, but I'm still, I guess, like, like, um, like Dr. Gant, this is out of my wheelhouse, but, um, when I read the, the RFP, I, it talks about, you know, commercial penal liability, workers' compensation, um, the builder's risk on the real liability. I mean, it sounds like the type of stuff of, of, you know, really simply this is a consultant who comes in and says, let me draw up some plans for you. So, I, I don't.
We build the insurance department, you have to refer.
Right.
Just insurance, we expect writers to have.
Right. And so, I'm, I'm, you know, until I find out more, and I, and I am cognizant of what, of what Dr. Dyson said too, in terms of, um, these things tend to get away from us. And, and so, I'm assuming that we, that, that this architectural firm will help us draw up the RFPs, and then the RFP will be out there, they won't do any of that.
First, the first thing is, is our step constructive RFPs. That's, that's the rule of administration is to have constructive RFPs based on the services that we're seeking.
They might as well talk about sub, sub-contractors through this RFP. I don't plan it, well, because an architectural firm may be sort of busy, or they, it's a clause that a lot of them to use a little firm or an independent boutique shop if they need to, uh, it, so forth. I guess the cosmetology, by the way, is perfectly handled. Uh, if you are building, if you're trying to build something that's very specific in terms of its nature, and that's not the architectural firm's expertise, they may go with someone who in the list of potential projects that they have for this period is a weight. So, there may be a subcontractor that is really an expert in developing weight and athletic capabilities. So, Lindsay Hope, right, so would make one of those use a, a subcontractor. That's an example.
A quick, a quick question, though, clarification before we vote. If this is not a agreement, this, this particular, um, agreement is for retainer, right? Like having the, the firm a retainer. So, if it's not a who, does that still mean that we would work with? It's still within our, um, rights to work with, with the district's, uh, right to work with the same architectural firm, right? It just means that it's not going to be like an ongoing relationship, but the district will still have autonomy, um, to choose that, okay, well, here's a project in mind that's same hard to do, here's another project in this.
So, what happens if this is projected, presumably every project that meets that threshold would have to come before you, anyway? We would have to run an RFP process for each, one of those.
Each individual project?
That was listed on the information that.
I don't know how many of those projects will be over eighty thousand dollars.
Over eighty thousand.
But any, any engagement or project with Lindsay Hope that's over eighty thousand dollars, we would have to put up an RFP process, receive all the responses, wait them, and then bring them forward. Versus having the ability to have Lindsay Hope on retainer, and as projects emerge, then you, you pick up the phone, you talk to the architectural firm, and you, you, you make one.
Okay. And then the retainer is for, I think, I've got the numbers confused, but it's for a certain length of time, length of time, or a number of projects?
Excuse me?
Is the retainer, this agreement is for a certain length of time or a certain number of projects?
So, the retainer would be for, um, it's very similar to what you're, for Mr. Pruitt in terms of, it, it's based on until, until we decide that this is not a good relationship, you know?
Okay.
Um, so that's, that's the length of it. And if you know, is it, the, the language is different, right? I mean, so we, we talk about having some type of cap, uh, for legal services. Here, we were discussing retainer, right? And, and as Mr. Worthy said, we've been with this firm for a while. Um, I think Mr. Gilbert wanted to outline that typically it's a ninety-day process to, to place a, a RFP out for a bid, receive responses, wait it, and then bring it before the board. And so, we would just have to embed a ninety-day runway just for an RFP process for each project. Um, and when you embed the ninety days, in some cases, uh, there are other, there are other factors that Mr. Gilbert and his team has to do, such as rain, for example. So, you could, you, you, you combine rain with the ninety-day, uh, period for putting out to bid architectural services. That's what we were trying to say in the information we sent over today. There is a, there is a higher probability that we won't make deadlines, uh, to start the school year, uh, without this type of retainer service.
Great.
Thank you. Great conversation. Uh, just a very simple question. Um, because I've heard, uh, dollar values kind of mentioned and large amounts. That, that's not actually stipulated here in this agreement in terms of how much, uh, there is. Because my personal feeling is that architects don't get the huge chunk of money, uh, from what I know. So, did we have, is there a ballpark figure for this in terms of money, or is it over?
They have, they have set percentages based on cost of construction. Well, they're not blocking its rates for us, you know, architects.
I think you're right. Out the door, there's, there's no commitment to, and helping communities. It is going to be, retainer, uh, that concept is, as they do work, we are billed at that certain rates, at which can terminate.
I can ask one more clarification question.
Of course, yes.
Um, does this preclude that, would this kind of arrangement preclude us from engaging with a different architect if there was a particular project that was very specialized? Or do you?
I don't know. I, I might have to look back into the contract and see if there's a, um, exclusive relationship. We can find that out.
Great.
I think it would stipulate this retirement, but we can't.
I'm gonna, I, I don't want to make any, I don't want to.
I'm just curious.
I, I don't want to, uh, try to.
Yeah, I'm good.
Suspect what, what's in the contract, but we'll, we'll find out and get back to you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, we have a motion and a second to, to approve this, uh, acceptance of the contract, the architectural firm on retainer. Um, all in favor?
All in favor.
Any opposed?
Two, three, four, five.
Uh, five opposed, two, three, four, um, so the motion fails. Moving on then, we have a number, number four, but I can double the decision there. Is that right, Mr. Worthy?
I, that was your item.
That's mine.
Yes.
Um, item N, we have, uh, received, um, a list of, uh, personnel recommendations. On the list of, of recommendations that, um, a personnel list for us to approve, is there a motion on personnel recommendations?
Uh, yes. I'm moving it, moving through.
Xavier Davis, it's a, it's a second by Mr. Worthy. Um, and again, again, for new board members, we don't dive into the particularity of any individuals in open session, um, already, uh, personnel generally. Um, but if there are questions specific to me about what we're doing at this moment, uh, we have a good intention to change that, otherwise we can write, call for a vote.
We want it to be session prior to the vote.
Right. And, and I, um, so to that comment, Ms. Davis and board members and for the public, I've, I've shared with the board in the past that, um, unless there is some serious situation, if there is a question regarding personnel, we should be transparent and have that conversation in public. Um, I think sometimes the public wonders why are we wanting to, uh, take a, a session to discuss personnel issues, and typically that spirals into a space where we're kind of identifying certain components. And so typically, it's, um, it is, um, the counsel I like to give board members is that if you have a question prior to the board meeting about a personnel issue, please give me a call. Um, and we can either talk on the phone, or we can talk personally. Um, but to leverage, um, as I said, a little session clause is, obviously, there's, um, there may be some items that, that require that conversation, but that's, that's been my standing concept to the board first.
And I'm trying to conduct a general conversation, but we would never talk about individuals, um, because the privacy laws would be down in my, in my incorrect.
Well, that's why I'm suggesting the board members should communicate with, uh, staff prior to the board meeting, right? So, so i- if, if you have an individual question about an individual on the, the list, that, that, we welcome those, those questions, but let's, then let's have that discussion so that we can give you the information. Um, so that's my.
Thank you. Good, good context.
And so I had, I've been wrong these years, I'm like, oh.
So, we have a motion and a second to approve the, uh, the personal recommendations. Uh, all in favor?
All in favor.
Any opposed?
Okay, thank you.
And that brings us to item O, the German department, the motion. Xavier Davis for Germany, second. So, by Dr. Worthy, all in favor?